This is a regular meeting of the Navasota City Council's called to order on Monday, the 24th of July, and council chambers left the record to all council members present. Welcome, thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cell phones in silent mode and visitors please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitor's remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Betty Tompkins of the Salem House of Miracles and then followed by the pledges. Welcome Betty.
Good evening. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we just come before your presence this evening, God, thanking you for this opportunity, Father, for us to touch and agree. Father, we just asked, do you be in the midst of this meeting? We thank you for the City Hall Council, Lord God. We ask you for your wisdom, Lord God, your knowledge, your know-how. Father, we ask that you would just bless this meeting. Father, we ask you to intervene when there is disagreements. Father, we are disagree to agree in the name of Jesus, and we just ask that you would be, just continue to be a light in this town, Lord God, in this city, God, and we ask that you, Father, would just continue to show your mercy and your grace upon us, oh God, and your peace in this town, Father. We thank you for the quiet peace that you have so graciously allowed us to have, Father. We thank you for every person that's here tonight, and I ask that you would just bless each one of our council members, Father, and give them wisdom, your wisdom, Father, the know-how to handle the business and the affairs of our city, and we just give you praise and honor for all that you do and about to do in the mighty name of Jesus, and we thank you, God. Amen. Thank God.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor.
For Texas's life, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Remarks, visitors, none?
Three seconds.
Staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, Mr. Council, Jennifer Raina, Public Works Director is going to come up and give us an update on all of our CIP projects.
Good evening, Council. Jennifer Raina, Public Works Director. I would like to start out with the update for the Utility Street CIP. On Friday, the July 21st, city, Kieschnick General Contractors and Blau Engineering met for our monthly update on this project. What we're going to be doing is, is going to have, once a month, we're going to get together and do an update on any concerns that we have. So, we touched some things on communications, scheduling, so on and so forth. We're going to get some updates to give to citizens, kind of before and after, some pictures maybe to put on Facebook, social media, so on and so forth. We don't want to overwhelm the citizens with too many updates. I think it would burn them out, but definitely a before and after. I will like to say that the contractors and the city have concerns of construction zone area of passing from residents going through those construction zone areas. If residents can maybe take a different route to get to places from Judson to Neal and Sycamore, that would be very nice. We're going to keep those roads passable, but it is a safety concern with the contractors and the city. They, we have some people that thinks that things are neat and they want to come up and take a look, but those, that's equipment over there is very dangerous to be around. So, we want to just kind of update the citizens to be aware of their surroundings when they are going down those roads, please. If not, maybe take an alternate route, a different way. We talked about that. The contractors are completed on the water main and the sewer on Neal Street, and then on Judson Street, there's about 300 linear foot of water that needs to be finished. What that, what we're going to do, it just kind of looks like we stopped kind of behind Arlen's. We still got quite a bit of ways to go, but we have to do some potholing on Washington to kind of see what size water main that is, to figure out on how we need to tie it in. So, that's why you've kind of stopped seeing that water main being laid right there. Sewer hasn't been began yet on that area. We'll start on that shortly. We're going to be finishing up with Neal, just the water and the sewer. We still have to do the tie-ins on the water on Neal Street, but that's a different process. Then, we're going to be moving on to Sycamore, and that's where I really want to let everybody know that, be aware of your surroundings in that area because there's going to be some big trenches in the, you know, kind of in the middle of the road on that. If everybody can get a different route. We are working with the school district and the bus for rerouting, maybe some of that school traffic. We won't be finished when school starts on any of those streets. We're going to try to make it passable, but there are going to be times where we're going to have to do a road closure in that area. So, staff and have been working with the bus barn on different routes. So, we have, we tried our best to get everything up and going, but there's just no way. But moving forward, everything, they started on the sewer today over there on Sycamore. Like I said, if we can have everybody kind of stay away from those areas, that would, that would be greatly appreciated.
Jennifer, I have a question, I'm sorry, specific to that project. What happened that we're not going to make the beginning of school year? I mean, it, it looks to me like we've been working every day almost, maybe not the weekends, but was there something, some issue that popped up?
No, it's just a really, really big project. You know, if this was just a street rehab, it would just be a different, we could just do a reconstruction and lay a new street, but this is completely replacing the water main, the sewer main, the water services, the water, the sewer services. So, that's, that's a big project. We, we really rearranged the schedule to start in that area so we could finish, and then you have school moving up to August 14th, and that kind of affect things. We were, I think we were just trying to shoot for the stars and to get it done, and it was almost impossible. It's, this type of project is just going to take time.
Okay, and you said something about potholing to find out where the water taps in. What does, what does that mean? Because my, my mind is visioning something probably not right.
They have to expose that area to find what size line it is in order to do, like either, you know, you know, as far as tapping into a six inch to a six inch, there's this different ways of doing it. So, we have to be prepared on getting the type of, how they basically go from eight to a six or six to a six. There's a different way of tapping into that water main. So, that water main that Judson's going to tie into, we have to pothole it to see the size of it in order for us to continue laying that line on Judson Street.
And that's just the line which they're using, pothole it?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because I, we have a lot of potholes, and if they see that, they may wonder what that's...
Escavate for that, for that water main.
Okay, gotcha. We don't need to add any more puddles.
I forget that I'm not talking to contractors. We're going to excavate for that water main.
Beautiful. Okay, that sounds much better.
All right. So, again, if everybody can use caution on construction zone areas, that would be greatly appreciated. Safety is number one in our priority. We're going to keep, try to keep those streets passable, but if it gets to where we cannot, I do not want a school bus trying to go down that area and don't see somebody or whatnot. The annual street maintenance, the cemetery road is complete. They got a little cleaning up to do on the ditches over there. Other than that, it's been paved and we got two new roads out there. They're going to be cleaning that up here shortly. They're going to start sweeping the new roads, getting off that loose rock this week. So, that's going to be all cleaned up. So, that's going to be a completed project by the end of this week. Is that correct, guys? So, we're good with saying that's going to be up and cleaned up and ready to finish up.
And thanks to actually filling in that corner piece where the 18-wheelers on the truck route there have dug out there, right there in the corner, added some asphalt and some stuff in there. That was great. Thank you.
Again, the fire hydrant project, we have nine left remaining on this project. We asked Kieschnick to pull off to, to try to make that deadline over there on Neal Street and Judson and Sycamore. They have nine left again. The project for that will be completed by the end of September. They reassured me last week on our Friday update that they're going to complete that project by the end of September. And then the airport utilities, airport utilities is going to kick off next week, Monday. They're going to start on the entry, the new road that's coming off of Fairway Drive, that's going to be on the south end, going to the corporate ramp, that's going to start next week. So, they're going to, they're going to, I think they've brought in some equipment, but they're going to start really hitting that pretty hard next week. I've reached out to our fixed base operator and, and the pilot over there on that corporate ramp, just to let them know. Contractors have been advised to stay off the ramp and do their best to not get any rocks or dirt on any ramps or taxiway and so on and so forth. So, while they, while that's all going on, then they'll, they'll start the utilities for the north end, and what they'll do is they'll come in off of Highway 6. There's a north end gate that they'll come off in. So, they'll, they'll try to avoid the whole, any areas off of that. Josh, you have a question on that entry?
They're coming off of Highway 6?
I mean, Highway 105, excuse me. Highway 105.
It's a long route.
Yeah. Sorry about that. They're coming off of 105. There's a north entry gate right there they'll come off, and then, we've had some construction over there, so there's a little path that they'll go to, come and go on that. That's a 60 calendar day project, so they should be completed probably mid, mid-October, mid-October.
Gives us a bit of time to read.
Yeah. So, they should be done with that. That's a pretty small project. I say that and then it blows up on me. So, we're going to do the best we can to get that done in a timely manner. I think that's kind of all I have for this evening. Do y'all have any questions or anything like that?
Do y'all also track all the TechDOT projects that are in the works?
Um, we try to, I do believe, maybe Lupe and Jason, they have some meetings.
Yeah, we're working on a, an update to get, to send out to y'all. Lupe and, I don't know if Raina was in on the, Lupe, were y'all able to reach, had a meeting last week?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll get something out.
Because we got a few different projects.
Yeah, we got several projects. We have the turn lanes, of course, assuming we got some confirmation about what the speed study that came back. I, I did see on social media there was questions about some other work going on, on Highway, Highway 6. Somebody was asking, well, my commute back into town from college station is going to be a traffic jam. There are some orange signs as you come back into town, right there at the river, but my, we have no idea about it. And we, we can, not having good communication with Union Pacific still with the crossing at the spur. We, we did get some information from TechDOT that said they've been trying without any avail. So, I have no idea. So, we'll probably have to, after we finalize some, some land deals, have some discussion about how we want to go next with them on that.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Any reports from council, from boards and commissions?
We had a planning and zoning meeting. They replanted a couple lots for Ohio. They had a five acre plot and they had it divided into three plots and they changed it to two so that it opens up about half of the property for future development type thing. And they also discussed the trash receptacles at the, the male kiosks. So, came up with some ideas on that that they're trying out.
All right. Just some things coming up here. On the 28th of July, we have the last movies in the park. It's going to be Top Gun Maverick. It'll be date night. That's at 8:30 at Brewley Park there on Brose. Again, that's the 28th. And then on the 8, on the August 1st, we have a school spy drive or giveaway at the Expo Center from 10 to 1. That's put on by the Grimes County AgriLife. And, again, that's 10 to 1 that on the 1st of August. Then, on the 10th of August, Thursday, it's Meet the Rattlers at 8 o'clock at Rattler Stadium. They introduce all the athletic and extracurricular activity will be presented. Then, on the 12th of August, is Farmer's Market coming up, and then we have the Sounds of Summer on 8/18. That's the Lost Boys. It's 80's hits. And just as a reminder, or just as a thanks, to all the Sounds of Summer sponsors, we're Republic Services, St. Joseph Health, Foltz Realty, ABC 15, KRA, K-Tex, and Citizen State Bank in Navasota. So, we want to definitely take another opportunity to thank them for their support of that to make it accessible to everyone. On the 19th of August, Saturday, is the Grimes County True Blue Foundation banquet. We have Mark Chestnut, John Schneider as entertainers coming, also Trent Howey, and then featuring Grimes County DA Andrea Bender as the speakers. So, that's, and that's out at the Expo Center on the 19th of August.
Mayor, you got one more thing. This time, I'd like to ask Jason Kokoski, Fire Chief, to come up. He's got an announcement he'd like to, to give y'all.
Some exciting news, Mayor and Council. After nearly two years, the truck has been delivered. So, it is here in Navasota. It's at the fire station. It went to the Teaks Annual Municipal Fire School Expo yesterday, so it sat up there. So, people got to go around and look at it, and standing around, it was kind of neat to listen to folks talk about it. I wasn't in uniform or anything, so they didn't know that I was attached to that truck, but it was good to hear. Friday at 10 o'clock, we're going to do the traditional push-in. So, y'all are all invited. Come check that out. And then after that, it'll go into service. So, we're continuing. Metro's going to be back a few, few more times this week, finishing up a few things. We're continuing to add our equipment onto it, and it got, got quite a bit done today. So, we should be ready to go by Friday with it.
10 AM at the station?
At the station. Yep. You know, that hill's, it's a pretty good incline. We're going to need all the help we can get to push it up that hill.
And just make sure he's not stepping on the brake, too, at the same time.
Is that like potholing?
Yeah.
Push-in.
Thank you all.
Make sure the door's open, too.
Make sure the door's closed.
Closed, okay.
Door on the truck is closed, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a beautiful truck, and the staff is happy to have it, so.
Thank you.
Item five is consideration false flag action approval of the single audit report and financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022 for the City of Navasota.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're requesting approval on the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. If you had any questions, the audit manager on the engagement is here this evening.
Mayor, Council, we, we did not have to have a single audit this year. So, a single audit is only required if you expense over 750,000 or more on grants, and we did not spend that much. So, all you have to prove is just the, the annual financial report.
Okay, could, could they just, could they just come and just give us a quick little summary of May? Just whatever, whatever's kind of standard op.
Good evening. I'm Ben Cohen with Bell Harris Bahatchek. I'm senior manager. Been auditing governments all around Texas for over 14 years. Just a brief summary, I came in, we, the other, there was another audit manager that originally was on the audit. She gave birth to a baby boy in June, so I got to take over, and, and I'm happy to do that. And first, just want to thank Mary Bell for just, you know, she came in in January and basically coming in and, and having to fill in the gaps, and she did a wonderful job of getting us that information to allow us to, to audit. Does everyone have a copy of this? I'm going to give kind of a reader's digest of this. I'm not going to read this thing verbatim because you'd kick me out of here. And, and so, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask as I'm talking. Just alert me if you can't get my attention, or you can wait till the end, or if you don't ask any questions, I won't be offended. But first, if you turn to page one, this two to three page letter is basically what you paid our firm to write. Now, we do help put this audit, put this financial statement and the note disclosures together, but basically, this whole thing states that we've given the city a clean opinion, that the financial statements are reported based off of general accepted accounting principles in accordance with, 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 with accounting standards, and that, that this free of material misstatements. So, basically, that's what this, this, and then this page, this letter also talks about what's management's responsibility. That's Mary Bell, everyone at the city is ultimately responsible, and then what our responsibility is. Then, I'm just going to cover, briefly cover some, some numbers in the financial statements. If you go to page 10, this is your statement of net position, and basically, this is your government if you were a business. We're capitalizing on your assets. We're treating debt as a liability, and, and you can't really look at this, these, these numbers in just one year of time. You got to look at it in the span of, you know, some, at least two years, but it's nice to know kind of where your total net position was five years ago. And I did look that up, and roughly, really what I'm talking about is that total net position number. For instance, on, for 2022, it was 40 million, about 42, 40.2 million, and in 2021, it was about 39.5 million. Typically, with cities, we'll see this number grow gradually, and that can be because the city's growing, but also naturally inflation, right? This is going to steadily increase. And so, just to kind of point some things out, 2017, that number was about 32.5 million, 2018, 32.6 million, 2019, 35.1 million, 20, 2020, 37.2 million. So, then you can see it increased to about 40 million, and now about, it's around 40 million. And so, those are good numbers. It just means that you're trending in the direction that we'd expect as auditors. And part of your increase this year is you did have, if you look on page 12, you had an increase in overall operations, and this is based off of full accrual statements. And the only thing I'd note on page 12 is there was more expenditures for business-type activities. This is all your enterprise activities, like your, for your utilities. There was an increase in expenses, but if you look up, you can see there's an increase in revenue. So, this is something we typically see, is, is with, with governments, you're not hoarding money, right? You're, you're going to, you make money, you got to spend it for your operations. So, you can see right here, that's a healthy flow there. I'm just going to cover a few things in the financials, a few more things. If you go to page 24, this is, and you look at that far left column, this is your general funds, and this is your general operations. This pays for public safety, public works, you know, repair and maintenance. And one of the things that a lot of finance people look at is your ending general fund balance. If you go down to the very bottom, you see that's about 7 million. Now, that's a little bit kind of misleading. It doesn't mean you had 7 million that you could spend whatever on. If you go back to page 20, you'd see that about 2 million of that was restricted for capital equipment. Part of it was the big fire truck. That's going to be potholing supposedly. But, so, really, your true ending fund balance is about $5 million. And so, one of the things that we look, as we look at your overall expenditures for the year, and so, if you go a little bit up to total expenditures of about 10.9 million, typically, we like to see that general fund balance, which I'm telling you is on a sign, it's about 5 million, to be at least 25% of your total current general fund expenditures. And you can see that you are well above that. You're roughly about in the 50% range. What that tells us is if something were to happen where, God forbid, you don't get revenues for six months, you can operate the city. The next thing to note is on page 52 and, sorry, 70 and 71, page 70 and 71. I always just like to point this out. This is your budget to actual, for your general fund. So, that actual column, or yeah, column, is your numbers that are reflected on page 24, or yeah, page, yeah, page 24. And then, you got your original budget on the far left, and your, your amended, and then ultimately, your actual. One of the things we look at is we mainly pay attention to the expenditure area, because, you know, we, your, your amended budget is ultimately your legal level of control for the general fund. And so, we look on, if you look on page 71, one of the things we look at is your total expenditures and your, your, if that's a positive number. So, you can see that the city was well below the legal level of control there. Y'all spent about 1.9 million less than budgeted. So, those are all good things there. The last thing I want to note, did everyone get a letter? So, there was, there was a few comments, and it's mainly the result of coming in at the end, we deemed them as other matters. We worked with Mary Bell. I'm confident that things will be much smoother, and we'd be able to get this audit done earlier, quicker. Obviously, the goal is to get done with audit within six months after the year, and actually, even sooner than that. But, but with, with Mary Bell here and, and working on those things, we can get that. The other thing I want to note is the last comment is in regards to a new standard. It's for, it, it won't really impact your final numbers, but there is a new standard that's coming into effect, and I won't go into many details, but it has to do with your information systems and the contracts that you have with those. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Does that last require that we get a new system, new operating system?
No, it, it has to do with how it's being reported. So, back, this is Gatsby 96. So, for instance, if you have like your accounting software, and you have a contract and a term with them for five years, you're actually looking at the cost over five years and putting it like a right-to-use asset and a liability for the price of that contract. Ultimately, if you take an asset and a liability and put them together, it equals zero. But, it's just, it has to do with presentation of the financial statements. Doesn't, doesn't have to do with any of the terms. You may look into having short, it actually is to enhance things because it allows, you know, it's, it's to get management to get a grip on all those contract and terms that are out there, and that could potentially be long-term. And so, one of the things that some cities are doing, trying to kind of stop the long-term committed contracts, but in some sense, a lot of times, it's just, those are the way those things work, because there's a lot of implementation cost for those softwares and stuff. So, it, it's mainly with presentation, but nothing with changing your terms.
Kind of curious. Told Mary Bell that this was coming when she, when you hired her, did she?
She, she was where? So...
She, she was where, um, so, um...
We, uh, we actually have contracted with Debtbook, so they took care of our, um, Gatsby eighty-seven, uh, implementation for what you'll see on, on this report this year. Um, and so we already have, a part of our contract with them is that they're gonna help us with Gatsby ninety-six. So I actually got an email from our representative today, um, and we'll start working with him. It'll take about ninety days so that everything will be available and presentable so that we can provide to our auditors for our next financial report.
So, so can I give you some history? So two thousand and six, that, when was Gatsby thirty-four?
Uh, two thousand and three.
Yeah, so two thousand and three, um, there was Gatsby thirty-four. So as long as Gatsby, Government Accounting Standards Board's been around, up through two thousand and three, there had been only thirty-four pronouncements. Since then, we're at ninety-six. So way more over a shorter period of time. And so, um, part of the reason that our audit process, there were a couple of things with audit process. Number one, turnover in the position. Number two was that a new audit, uh, Gatsby that we had to follow, uh, which required us to get software, which we contracted with Debtbook. Um, that required us to put all this information in. Once we get all the information in, then they have to audit that information. And so there was a time lag for that, uh, but we had already scheduled for audit fieldwork in February. So being an auditor for four years, um, you schedule those audits out for all your audit clients. If your audit client can't make that time, you've already got another audit scheduled. So we were under, we, we had to work with the auditors when they could fit it in to get our audit done. So there was a lot of things and obstacles that we had to overcome this, this year. So that's why you're getting it so late. Um, and, and the other piece is, in previous years, and even this year, um, uh, the city has not provided year-end journal entries to close out all of the accounts and do everything that they needed to. They require, they've asked that the auditors assist them with doing the year-end journal entries and work papers, which, um, those are type things we're going to move away from and get more into doing what we're supposed to be doing by doing our work papers, providing financials to them, and then they come in and audit those audits. And so, um, that's what Mary Bell is gonna be working over the next year, trying to get that. So net, this doesn't occur next year. But the biggest piece was the debt, was actually trying to get Debtbook to come in and get the leases.
This, this year, uh, and if you look on page one, you'll see emphasis of matter, um, and you'll see that, that's our, where we, we discussed about Gatsby eighty-seven. This had to do with your leases. So you, the, the city does have a lot of operational leases, actually where they're the, the, the less sore, where you're leasing airport usage to different entities. And so there was a lot of those terms in there, and then there was also equipment, uh, that you, you had, you ultimately all leased out, that, that you're leasing, so you're the less C, and so there's, so there was, there was a lot, there was, there was actually a, the city had quite a few lease agreements out there.
Enterprise, all of our vehicles, that had to be entered. So I think of all of our vehicles, we had to enter in each line item for each one of those vehicles, um, and...
And I, I wanna add that I was not responsible for that, for, you know, wanting Gatsby eighty... I don't have that much authority, but if I was, I wouldn't have, I would say we don't need to have Gatsby eighty-seven. But unfortunately, I don't have the, I don't know anyone up in Connecticut in the headquarters there to tell them. I don't, I wish I did, but...
Well, I applaud staff for being able to get through that.
It's all, Mary Bell, she's the one that got it all up and, up and going, and it's worked, uh, frivolously to try to get it done. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving, we approve the annual financial report. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gussner, second by Mr. Phillips to approve new financial report fiscal year ending in September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two for the city of Navasota. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm carries.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you. Have a safe trip back.
Item six, consideration possible action on renewal of school resource officer, SRO, program interlocal agreement with Navasota ISD for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mayor, City Council, Mike Myers, Chief of Police. Uh, the interlocal agreement is these, pretty much the same ones we've had in the past several years, just changed it up a little bit. Um, got with NISD, city attorney, um, read through it. This basically is just an agreement for two of our officers to work for NISD during the school years at the schools, and then they are compensated by NISD during that time.
Chief, could you go over the responsibilities of the SRO, technically, uh, with the emphasis we've had with school shootings and everything? I, I think that people tend to think of a policeman being in the school, but there, there is the, the tip of the spear, as it were, on the first responders. And I think that this, that's, that's one of the duties, but, but there are a lot of other duties that are involved in this.
Right, and that's kinda, if you've seen the previous agreements, that we changed this one up a lot. Um, so the two SROs are Navasota city police officers assigned to the schools. They focus on any Texas state laws that are broken at the schools. They don't reinforce policies and so forth like that, but they're present, uh, eight hours a day at the schools. They have a patrol car that is in the agreement, which partially paid for through us and NISD. Uh, full uniform, they can get there in the morning when kids are dropped off until they are picked up. So they walk the grounds, interact with the students, um, on a positive note, being seen, um, at all the pickups, drop-offs, cafeteria lunches, and so forth like that. And then if there is a violation of the law, then that's when they intervene on that end of it.
They have, they have responsibilities too for, uh, some instructional time?
No, we do not have a classroom or anything set up for that.
And, and also, uh...
They are there for that. If, if a student, and a part of it's in this as well, if a student wants to come up and talk with them, and in a secure environment with a law enforcement officer, they can. But we also have, they have their counselors at school, that's their primary. But if it goes into a law side, or they feel more comfortable with an officer, they're allowed to speak with them. And then if it does continue on to, like say it's a, a sexual assault or something that occurred in the past, or something, or they wanna talk to an officer, maybe see what their law is, or they feel more comfortable talking to an officer, yes, they can.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the things that we added to it was some of the language where it states in there about like mentorship, uh, you know, fostering some relationships, some one-on-one relationships, um, so that they can do some mentoring, so...
Uh, Chief, I have a couple of questions. Uh... So on the resource officers, uh, they will do a full-time basis, eight hours a day. So just say if it's a basketball game, or football game, or track needing, they will not work overtime?
So this is just for their on-duty schedule, similar to the officers on regular patrol. They're on a forty-hour week, okay? Anything basketball, football, and all that is an off-duty assignment, and there's a separate contract between NISD and MPD for hiring of law enforcement for their extra-clicker games and so forth like that. SROs generally sign up for that type of stuff, but that's not in basically their salary pay through this contract, that's just an off-duty one. And we just did meet with NISD about that, uh, for each type of game and how many officers they want in security, because we're, we're working on that with them as well. We're changing up a little bit this year.
Okay. With the, um, more than two school buildings in, in the city limits, is the OSR officers kind of floating back and forth, or?
So right now, they've currently been assigned to high school and junior high, and just a little history on the, the bill that passed was needing an armed person at each school. We are working through the budget right now. Um, NISD brought this up during the school board meeting, which they signed this agreement, but their question was asked about more officers. And so in the budget for, for that, we did put for another full-time SRO position, and then an off-duty assignment for another school. So technically, this one is just our agreement for the last year, because it expired, to keep the two there. And once we do go through the budget, it'll be an additional agreement to add one more, so there would be three. And then there's another position where we would use the guys that are off-duty to go into the schools, because it's costly just to hire another officer in the vehicle and all that. So we're trying to work between both budgets on how we can do this and safely put an officer in each school slowly as we grow.
So kinda, so kinda, we, um, we, going through the budget process, we reached out and said, um, how many officers do you really need? Um, and find, we tried to look at different ways and options to fund that. So one of the things, uh, that some of our other surrounding, um, agencies do for SROs, uh, if, uh, if they need additional ones, they are, um, using the officers that they currently have on staff, um, that are off-duty. So many of our, our police officers have off-duty jobs. Those off-duty jobs is, you know, there's a requirement, they have to, if they get off at six AM, they can't, you know, if they've been on a twelve-hour-plus shift, we have some policy that says you can't go, uh, do some off-duty jobs for so many ti- hours, or whatever it is. So there are some limitations there, but on our off-duty officers, when they're off their time, then they, uh, they can have an off-duty job. So instead of going out and being security at Grant Pryco, let's use that for an example, just say if they needed a, a security person, they don't know for sure if Grant Pryco isn't even gonna need somebody every, all the time, or even if it's out at the Expo Center, they have a Kinsyata, they need an off-duty, uh, officer. This is gonna be guaranteed. So this means that an officer or officers will have the opportunity to have off-duty job that is gonna be fully paid by NISD. The, the cost is, there's a little bit more cost for NISD, but, um, that's why we, going into the budget, we're gonna have one full-time person proposed, and then another person that they'll be funding through use of off-duty officers. So there's no additional cost to us, because for a full-time SRO, the school district, it comes about a seventy-thirty split. So they pay about seventy percent of the cost of that officer, and we pay thirty percent, because it's about two, two months out of the year that we get on, plus any of the spring break, the, uh, holiday breaks and, and stuff like that. So it's about thirty percent. So the school district, we explained to the school district, hey, we're strapped just like you for cash. We need to find another way to try to, uh, see if we can figure out funding for this. So the, the proposal will be, it'll be coming to you, will be for a full-time person, and then for the other person would be using off-duty. So like I said, it's gonna be a little bit more cost, because they're going to pay the benefits and the FICA, the TMRS, and the overtime cost for that officer. Uh, so it's no out-of-pocket cost for the city. That, we don't have to have any additional uniforms, there's nothing, because that officer already exists on staff.
Patrol car and all that.
Yeah, everything. We, we don't have to do any equipment, nothing. They just provide that officer. Now, again, it won't be just one officer, it'll be probably a mixture of one to two officers that'll be dedicated to NISD. But they'll still have to go through the training programs and all of the other stuff that other SROs will.
Right now, our, our current two primarily stay at the high school and junior high. They do shift around. Our goal, NISD's goal, is also as well, is to have an officer at each campus. But it's costly, for both agencies, us and NISD, so we came up with this plan. We're gonna get one full-time, which we'll hire an officer full-time for SRO, and then the other one will fill in with officers. So if they have a twelve-hour shift, they work Monday, Tuesday, they're off Wednesday, Thursday, the Wednesday, Thursday, they can pick up shifts at the school. And that way, they're in uniform, they're a full-time cop, and they can drive their patrol car over there, and just, just like a regular one.
And it's a guaranteed full-time, I mean, it's a guaranteed off-duty job, hour-specific, so they, they know they're getting that.
One other question on this, on the five point four, uh, on G, it said that, uh, the SRO officer should not go to the home of a student without another officer or school administrator when a visit is warranted. Can you explain that?
So that's just, uh, it's just standard with the school, and they do have their rules and laws as well. So if the student is disciplined or needs to be taken home, your administrator rides with the officer, or they're needed to check on him for juancy or so forth like that. Uh, administrat- administrative stuff, the officer's just not gonna go on their own to enforce school policies, school things like that.
Okay.
The officer will have a administrator onboard, go in there with them, and the administrator, that's, a lot of this was, the administrators, it's all on them for their policies and rules and so forth, unless it's a violation of state law, then the officer, that's why it's it, unless it's warranted. If it is something strictly state law violation...
Just going, just stand by it.
Correct.
Administrator does the work.
Because we are assigned to the NISD schools and to assist them, and so they're just assisting on that capacity. They're not going there, hey, you didn't show up to school, uh, but if it's a school, they'll take the administrator. Mr. Wesley is generally the one that goes with them from the high school and checks in on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve the renewal of the school resource officer program agreement with NISD for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second. Motion, excuse me, motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Harris to approve the SRO program interlocal agreement with Navasota and the county school district for twenty-three, twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
No.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm carries.
Like I said, this will be the first one, and then we'll bring the second one back when we, through the budget process.
Still need to sign on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I already have them.
Oh, you already got them? Okay.
I already got them.
I printed them all.
Thank you, Chief. Item seven, consideration of possible action, appointments to boards and commissions. Um, are you gonna go over the background?
Well, I'm gonna do a little bit of it, yes.
Okay, alright.
So Michelle Savinsky, Executive Administrative Assistant. Um, I'm here tonight to let you know about an opening on the zoning board of adjustments, uh, due to Mr. Ethan Barcock, Barcheck, excuse me, um, that he was appointed, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the old council believes it is in the best interest to avoid any conflicts of interest for Mr. Barcheck, uh, to not occupy a position on both the P&amp;Z Commission and the ZBOA. Um, therefore, the, um, staff recommends city council appointing a replacement for Mr. Barcheck on the ZBOA, um, and that we did receive two applications for the position, uh, Mr. Lewis Badotto and Jill Conlin. Um, also too, we received an application from Michael Maderos. Uh, he was actually one of our graduates for the citizens, uh, Navasota Citizens University. Um, he applied to be on the Parks Board or the Keep Navasota Beautiful. The Parks Board is completely full at the moment, um, and the Keep Navasota Beautiful has several openings. Um, also too, the Navasota Public Library has an opening, but we currently do not have any applications for this position at this time.
And, uh, Mayor, you had a question. Just to let you know that we have not received an official resignation from the Parks Board, so, uh, it, it's currently still full, but we, um, just because someone might make a statement on Facebook, we don't, they gotta actually fill out something and say, well, I resign, and that's kind of what we did with, um, with Ethan, asking for a resignation.
Just wanted clarification.
Problem? Good deal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Jill Conlin to the zoning board of adjustments.
Second.
And, do we need to do two different motions?
Yeah, let's do them separate.
Okay. Zoning board of adjustments.
Okay.
We have, uh, motion to appoint Jill Conlin to the zoning board of adjustments, motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Peterson. Further discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Mike, Michael Metiers, or something like that, uh, Maderos, to Keep Navasota Beautiful.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips to appoint Michael...
Maderos.
Maderos.
Harris.
To, uh, the Keep Navasota Beautiful Commission, second by, Ms. Peterson, did you, no?
Yes, Peterson.
Yes. Ms. Peterson seconded that one. Any, and any further discussion? Yes.
Michael is the one that was on the, uh...
NCU.
On the citizen.
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And so we'll keep his application on file for down the road if a opening does come. And so we'll keep his application on file for down the road if an opening does come about. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Is there, is there anything to, we could do for Mr. Bedotto? Any, is there's any, are there?
He's still an alternate.
He applied, he's not an alternate, but his wife is.
This wife is currently an alternate.
And she said, if, if he wants to be on it, that's fine and she would resign.
Sure. Do we, do we have a place as alternate?
For?
I mean, like, is that really a thing?
On certain boards.
An alternate too?
Certain ones.
Board of adjustments, sure is.
Okay, so. For, for ZBOA, yes. For ZBOA, we have alternates.
There's four on the board of adjustments.
She would need to resign before we could appoint anybody to that.
Right.
Yes, yes, exactly. We don't want two, two family members.
In the same position.
Same position.
Well, she's kind of made a conditional, she'll resign if he wants the job.
Send us your resignation if you want.
And we don't want, we don't want a family.
Yeah, when we do our regular.
Don't need a family dispute here.
Regular appointments will come up in September, so. Maybe then.
And he didn't, he didn't indicate any second choice.
But, but we will be reaching out. We'll be doing some publications for our, all of our boards and commissions coming up in September.
Alright. Thank you. Item eight is consideration of possible action, change order number one for Streets and Utilities Capital Improvement Project in amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John McKay, graduate engineer here for the city. The, this is a change order we've been looking at, doing some planning on it for a while. This work has not been completed yet. This is just, now is the most economical time to get this work done. At the end of the day, there's a little picture that I'd sent attached. There's also the drawing, but that was a lot. There's this picture here. And at the end of the day, that house all the way up on Washington Street, back when they originally ran sewer on Kettler, they actually ran his service all the way back to Kettler. And they ran it through those trees that were not that big at the time. They ran it with clay pipe. They, it was done, done how it was done. And we've been having issues with that line quite a bit over the years and we foresee having more issues because it's clay pipe. Those are, you're going to keep breaking that pipe. So this is a chance, we're already rerunning the sewer on Kettler in this project. There's a manhole right there in the intersection. Go ahead and tie in there and run a service along the street to replace that. Makes sense. If we do it now, we don't have to dig back into Kettler later because we're going to be re, kind of repaving Kettler. So if we have to get back to that manhole, we'd have to dig up and trench the work we just did. So it's one of those, let's just do it now as a thought.
And other than usually a straight shot out of a house, usually, this is real abnormal, isn't it? I mean, this is very odd.
There are actually multiple around, around the city like this, from back in the old, it's abnormal nowadays. It's very abnormal now.
You usually do it under the street.
Correct.
If you can.
Is this, this common, those houses along the north side of Washington Avenue, their sewer line runs back and ties in with Kettler?
I know it happens on the other side of McNair as well, but we're not having issues because there's no big trees there. Now, this guy could tie back in. The way we've got this ran, if that guy does start to have issues, we can just dogleg him over to where the green line is, right there. We can dogleg him in there and catch him. But there, there's a goodly chunk of unknowns on these sewer services. We're finding out as we're digging up Neal Street.
So will it be a cost to homeowners to get hooked back up?
It has not been a cost to any of the other homeowners, so I don't believe it would be here either. So far, we've been connecting back to the right away, the existing right away. We'd still be connecting to the existing right away, it just wouldn't be the Kettler right away. It would be the McNair right away line. So there might be a little bit of a cost to the homeowner to rerun that little smidgen of pipe to the house, but I don't see it. It'll probably just get and taken care of.
So my question really is more about the road. I mean, I think it's a great idea to replace the pipe, but we're going to dig up another road that we don't have plans to fix at this point? Is that what you're, if you're going to move it to the middle of McNair, you're going to have to dig up McNair to lay this? Now we've got another road that's got issues?
Yes, it will look a lot like Hillside does. It won't be the issues. We're going to come back in.
Well, Hillside's concrete. This is asphalt.
But it'll still be that long trench, that same kind of trench. They're still going back in with the cement stabilized sand and asphalt and everything, but just.
Right. Is the roadway a part of this cost? Because I didn't see anything that talks about the road. I see moving the sewer line.
No. So the, the trench repair was how we're proposing doing this. So one of the first line items, actually the first line item, seventy-five square yards, saw cut and replace existing. HMAC is just hot mist mix asphalt concrete. It's asphalt, two inches of asphalt.
It's just going to be cosmetic. Well, I, I get cosmetic, but I also see what's happening on Neal and on Judson, and it's terrible. And so now we're asking citizens to find another way to go. And now we're tying up another way to go that may be impassable at some point. That was, that's my only concern. I think it's a great idea. I think we should do it. But do you feel like that that's an issue?
I don't necessarily because as this project moves around, those areas that are closed, it's not like, right now, our contractors are screaming to get Neal where they're totally off, all their equipment's gone. Then you're going to start seeing things on Sycamore. This would happen when you'd be seeing things at Kettler anyways.
Well, I see right now that Neal is torn up and Sycamore is torn up because the road close sign is out and Judson's torn up. And so I just, is there a way to do this so that it's not, everything's torn up at the exact same time?
The less.
And I'm sure that y'all are, y'all have that under control. That's just.
Yeah.
My thinking is.
The less we have tore up at one time, the slower your project's moving, essentially.
Okay.
And we're already looking at a year and a half long project. So part of what we're running into is getting enough crews to perform the work quick enough, which just means there's multiple fronts open on that job at once. But this wouldn't happen until we are already messing with Kettler. So the way you do these sewers, you always start, with sewers, you always start, we call it the downhill side. You, you don't quite know how they laid those pipes in the fifties. So you start at a spot and then you build your way, we call it uphill. So this would just naturally, when we're putting that manhole there at McNair and Kettler, they'd have one crew going up Kettler and they'd just take a day or two. They ask for five days in this change order to run up McNair at the same time.
It has to be done, right?
I think it should be done.
Just another road that will be torn up. It's already kind of torn up, so it might be good to get that intersection.
Yeah. One thing is, the, we did look at the cost to just go ahead and add that street to the project, but it became a six-digit problem. It was north of a hundred thousand. So it was a thousand square yards to replace all of that, just about. So and we're talking, I think, a hundred and twenty square yard for asphalt or something around there. So that's just, that's a lot for a sewer service.
Yeah.
And they're the only ones that are on that clay line?
That's actually an individual line to that house, yes.
How?
Yeah, all the way back up to Kettler. And like I said, the neighbor across the street has, is in the same situation, but we're not having issues with the line, so we're not, it's not a known troublemaker.
Sleeping dog.
Sleeping dog, yep, let it lie.
And shutting that water line off doesn't really affect that, the homeowner on McNair, doesn't affect her yard?
No, we're just going to abandon it in place. That's the whole purpose, since don't bother her anymore. Get this guy a better line and stop bugging her and her trees.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve change order number one for the Streets Utilities Capital Improvement Project in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four fifty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Gesner to approve change order number one for Streets and Utilities CIP in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten twenty-six dash twenty-three, authorizing restricted prior service credit for employees who are members of the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
Mayor, members of council, several months ago, we went through our strategic planning sessions. Part of those strategic planning sessions, you asked staff to, to look at some, whatever we could do to increase some benefits to our employees. One of the things we discussed was the Texas Municipal Retirement System. It's the retirement system that all our employees are through. Currently, right now, it, you have to, to be vested is five years. You can retire after twenty-five years of service in TMRS. With that, we, we require employees to put five percent in and the city matches two to one. Currently, right now, for next year, our rates for that two to one match is around six point two four percent. And again, they use actuaries. So TMRS, they've got these actuaries that come in and do the analysis based on future projections, lifespans and everything. And one of the things I know that the council asked was if we could find a way to go from a twenty-five-year city to a twenty-year city and look at possibly increasing employees' deposits from five percent to six percent or five percent to seven percent. So knowing that you, once you make those changes, you can't, you can't go backwards, but you can go forward. So we're going through the budget process. I don't see a way that we can financially be able to move forward with going from, you know, from, go from five to seven percent is going to be nearly a half a million to six hundred thousand dollars more because that, that percentage, I said it was six point two four, would mean that to go from five percent to seven percent for, and move from twenty-five years to a twenty-year is around nearly thirteen percent. So that, that more than doubles what we're paying now to TMRS from the city side. Our employees were all onboard. They're all onboard for doing that. So knowing that council would like for us to start looking at other things, we did have some conversation with TMRS and said, hey, there are some low-hanging fruit things that are out there that we can do to, to help employees. And tonight, you have before you what they call, it's the restricted prior service credit. And what that does is an optional TMRS benefit that municipalities can offer to our employees that allows them to use previous full-time employment at another public employer to satisfy that length of service. So let's say, and it's listed through here, and mainly either, that's either federal or state, or of course, another local jurisdiction, but also military experience. We've got a lot of our, Police Department has a lot of officers that have military experience. We've got some other staff that have military experience. In addition to that, it also allows anybody that's also been in the Texas Teachers Retirement System. So if we've got any teachers, which currently, right now, we have a Parks, a Parks Manager, a Parks Reg Manager that actually came from the school side. So those years of experience can count as credit to try to get to the vested. So for instance, our Parks Person, I think he's had thirteen years experience in the, in the TRS system. And with that, that means, if this is approved, means that he can fill out the form and get that credit for the five years. So it means he's automatically vested. So on the other end, let's talk about our police officer. So maybe we have a police officer out there that has got twenty years in and they, they have some military experience at the very, at the very beginning of their, their career and they were in the military for five years. Well, they can fill out the information here and fill out the form and everything is approved. And they would send that in and they automatically will get that twenty-five years. Now, what you have before you is, there is no, no financial obligation. There's, there's nothing on the city, nothing on the employer, on employee. But something you have to remember is, an employee, you're getting credit. So when you're getting that credit, whatever credit years it is, you never were putting money into the system. So where myself, I've got like twenty-two years in the system, I've got twenty years worth of payments that's gone into the system. And my retirement's going to be based on what money I put into the system, not the number of years that I have for service. And so this was a low-hanging fruit that can get some of our employees vested pretty, pretty quickly. In addition to that, if we've got some employees that are reaching end of their career and want to retire, but they haven't got to that twenty-five year, this is an opportunity that they have some, some experience, they can get there. And so you have an ordinance before you that TMRS has provided to us. That is the language that's needed to be in it. We've ran it through legal counsel and all good to go here. So that's what you have before you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
We should help with retention a little.
This, again, it's a low-hanging fruit. There are some employees that this would, would help out. And again, there's no cost obligation to the city or to the employee.
Any idea how many employees it would affect?
I, I have no idea. How many, how many employees we have, chiefs in, with y'all's bunch that are military? So maybe twenty employees?
Second.
I expect, yes, it's, you know, nearly a third.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Third or fourth.
Yeah.
Of our. Yeah.
Kind of a no-brainer.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the first reading ordinance ten twenty-six twenty-three, authorizing restricted prior service credit for employees who are members of the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Peterson, second by Mr. Phillips to approve on first reading ordinance ten twenty-six dash twenty-three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item ten, City Council's meeting executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, consultation with legal counsel regarding city and episode of water and sewer utility service areas and associated matters, matters. Time is seven oh seven. We reconvene in open session. Time is seven thirty-nine. And item twelve, consideration of possible action on, city and episode of water and sewer utility service areas, including but not limited to retaining legal counsel regarding city and episode of water and sewer utility service areas and associated matters. Any no action, we are adjourned.